Hi, trustee Woodley. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am. Hello.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start the meeting soon.
All right, thank you, JJ. I'll stay off video as much as possible just because I don't know how stable of a wifi is here, right on the beach.
Okay. If you have a question, it might be best to text me or shoot me a quick email and just because we won't be able to see your hand raised with the presentation on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. Before I hit the gavel, just want to confirm we have clerk Woodley with us? Hi, clerk Woodley. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. It is 2:08 PM on this Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Vice President Mayberry, can you please do roll?
Trustee Hull.
President.
Vice President Mayberry is present. Trustee Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix is absent. President Smith. Trustee Westlake. Trustee Woodley.
President.
And student representative Maya Hartley.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, Madam President.
Wonderful. Well, in a moment, we're going to hear more about why she is so incredibly special to us, but for now, I would like to welcome Marvin Pacola's kitchen manager, Stephanie Jo Hall. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Yeah, all right. That closes item 1.03. We'll go to 1.04, a land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Ni'ui, Western Shoshone, and Nu'wu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. That closes item 1.04 and section one in its entirety. We move on now to section two, our consent agenda items. Today, we have items 2.02 to 2.27, and prior to today's meeting, I have not received any notice about any trustees pulling any of these items and seeing no lights on now. JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.27?
John Appolito for items 2.05, 2.08, and 2.18.
Thank you. John, before you get going, JJ, can you just read those again so that I can mark those?
2.05, 2.08, 2.18.
2.18. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. John Appolito with Protect Nevada Children. On 2.18, another $3.9 million for laptops for kids. By now, most of us who are paying attention realize that devices for kids, especially little kids, don't improve student learning at all. In fact, they're more of a distraction than anything else. I still haven't heard you guys have that discussion. Maybe I missed it. I haven't been coming much or watching all the meetings, but just putting more devices in the kids' hands is not the answer. And I don't understand why we do it without having a discussion, but that's what you guys do. I guess you can do what you want. You're the ones with the money. So here's one of the first things, and a lot of you have seen this, maybe not all of you. One of the first articles I read back 10 years ago, Politico, "The Big Biz of Spying on Little Kids." So I'm going to present both of these for the record because when you give those kids the devices, the kids don't know what it's okay and what's not okay to share with these vendors. And the vendors collect up every bit of data they can get. What we do know is that at least a dozen kids so far have had their admissions to Harvard rescinded because of something they've posted online. They're 18-year-old kids that are probably brilliant. Second, third, fourth graders don't know what they should and shouldn't be doing on the laptops. And we all know that they're using the devices inappropriately. That's not even counting the porn at the elementary school, just in general. But you guys keep putting devices in their hands, requiring them to use them, and I think some of you even know it's wrong, but you don't say anything. And back when the kids first started having these and when the SANE was being developed, the Las Vegas Review-Journal wrote this article, "Nevada's New Super Data System Makes School Records Permanent." And Linda from NSHI said, quote, "We're one of five states that is taking something like this this far." And she's talking about SANE, the database. Thanks to Angie Taylor and us, some of the data from SANE is going to start being deleted. So thank goodness we've stuck with it. If anyone here has helped, thank you. I haven't seen proof of it. But what we need is your help with Infinite Campus. That's the most massive database ever created on children. They had five paid lobbyists in Nevada in our last session. We need help from you guys to start deleting some of the data from Infinite Campus. That data should not be stored forever, and a lot of it's very incriminating. The medical, the psychiatric, the discipline, the minor discipline, the MTSS, we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Appolito.
That's all I have for consent.
Thank you. All right, team. I'll bring it back here. Unless there's any discussion on the motion, I will, or a discussion on any of these items, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Wonderful. We have a motion to Wonderful, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by Trustee Westlake. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero, thank you so much, colleagues. That closes Section 2 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 3, our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. We have two items before us today, starting with item 3.01. Presentation and Discussion to Provide the Board of Trustees an Update on the Progress Made by Southwest Food Service Excellence LLC, SFE, Since Assuming Management of the Washoe County School District Nutrition Services Department. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we have with us today our Chief Operations Officer, Adam Cersei, and the Director of Nutrition Services from SFE, Tim Wilson. Welcome both of you. And then I believe we have a special guest, but we will again meet her in a little bit.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. We do have so much good news to share and so many people to thank for that. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this important work that we do. And hopefully, there was some food enjoyed by the board before this, and maybe that's a good example of how, you know, a full belly can really help stimulate thoughtful learning. Anyway, good evening, or good afternoon, my name's Adam Cersei. For the record, I'm the Chief Operating Officer with the district. And with me is Tim Wilson, as mentioned, will introduce himself in a moment. Just diving in, though, before we can talk about all the fun stuff that the Nutrition Services team does across all the schools in our district, we really need to ground everyone's understanding in the framework, in the National School Lunch Program in which they operate. So this is actually something that is appropriated by the United States Congress and is administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture via the Nevada Department of Agriculture. That specifies the number of calories that meals can contain, the types and diversity of carbs and proteins and fruits and vegetables, and the levels of different other ingredients that all of our menus must comply with. And they also provide some financial support for this work. So it's actually a pretty complex program, but it's one that works pretty well across the United States and that our school works within to serve all of our school meals throughout the district. This program also provides us an opportunity, well, just to back up really to the bottom bullet, we talk about this in terms of an enterprise fund. So I think that's important context to speak about all of the expenditures and revenues associated with this work is really self-contained, separate from the general fund. This is based on this National School Lunch Program and the reimbursement that we get from the NDA and the federal government, as well as, you know, the costs that we receive from some of our students for the meals. Starting with those paid meals, we're able through this program to keep costs down to a level of, it's actually $2.10 for a breakfast and $3.35 for a lunch. So you can't hardly buy a granola bar for that at the gas station, much less a halfway decent balanced meal. So we're pretty proud of not only keeping costs that low, but the diversity and quality that we are able to provide. Beyond that, through other special programs within the National School Lunch Program, we're able to provide individual students and families completely free meals based on their household income levels. And then across 68 of our schools, based on the total, the average basically of the different measures of poverty and income across the enrollments at those schools, every student in those schools actually eats their meals without charge to them. So it's a complex program, but it's one that provides kind of the basis for understanding in the work that we do. Talking about that work a little bit is really just eye-popping. I'll let you read all of these statistics and try to put them into context. One that jumped out at me, though, obviously 37,000-plus meals every day across our district, but the percentage of which are actually breakfasts, you know? And so how, that just struck me, how important it is to start our day off with some food in our bellies, often typically the first food that our students receive that day. Over 14,000 breakfasts served every day across our district. So really staggering, but fast-forwarding then to the people, okay? These are a team of over, well over 400 individuals across every school in our district, as well as our central kitchen that we're going to hear about. Members of the central admin team such as myself, as well as from the business office, Capital Projects on occasion, play integral roles in helping support this work. But from our administrators to some of the staff that work just a couple hours a day in our schools and have some of the most beautiful stories about how they've worked there for decades and how they've seen generations of families go through those tiny school kitchens. It's really a special, special team to be a part of, integrated within our schools. So I'm going to turn the tables over to Mr. Wilson. I'll give him just a brief introduction. Again, SFE, Food Service Excellence, Southwest Food Service Excellence, is our vendor administrator. We talk about 400 special individuals who help make this magic happen. SFE is contracted with the school district to administer this work. So they have about 10 full-time staff, the rest, 420, are school district employees embedded within all of our schools. They're responsible for the leadership and the financial oversight of this enterprise fund. So with that, I'll let Tim introduce himself and tell a little bit more about him and the work of the team that he leads. Thank you.
All right, Tim Wilson, for the record? That's going to be hard to follow. Thanks, Adam. I appreciate that. A little bit about Southwest Food Service. I mean, we're a culinary-based food service management company. And I think the key here is we only do K-12. We don't do any other line of business but K-12. So all of our administrators, all of our chefs, all we focus is on is K-12. We don't bend any other type of meal. We really focus on fresh from scratch, variety, and just restaurant-inspired. We really want to bring that flair to K-12. Obviously, with that comes compliance. So we always follow all the USDA, NDA. There's a lot of regulations, health codes, food safeties. We make sure we stay within that realm. But, you know, ultimately, we want to pledge to increase K-12 participation and revenues. And that all starts with the students, you know? We want to drive participation. A little bit about the central kitchen. I actually, I consider that that's a hub of nutrition services. Everything starts there from the central production kitchen to the warehouse and all the deliveries to the secondaries. We have over 40 team members there. We pack over 50,000 individual items a day, and 9,000 of those are scratch-cooked. Within that, we serve 70 sites at the elementaries that we deliver every single day food to the elementary sites. The warehouse operations receives food in every single day from produce to milk, Cisco, and that's going out to all the secondaries. So we deliver to all the secondaries. Everything comes out of the central kitchen warehouse. So we are really a well-run machine. Also, we use it as the test kitchen with the executive chef. We've been testing out new recipes, new egg formulations, biscuit sandwiches, things like that. So it all, it all starts there. But within that department, we have a whole separate department in there, which is the special programs. Amber Bass leads that, she's been with us since 2006. Every day, she handles 115 special diet requests. She makes those meals individually, and those are sent out individually on top of the rest of the food, in individual boxes labeled. Her department does a fantastic job for any special dietary needs. She also does all the snack programs for Food Bank. So in total, she packs in her little bucket with her four staff, 4,000 meals a day. And then she also supports about 73 sites that do after-school snack program. She's actually here, if you want to stand up. But the biggest thing with Amber is she's also being recognized for the 2026 RISE Award, you know, Nevada recognizing inspirational school employee. So we're really hoping that she wins. So just wanted to really give her a big shout-out.
If we could pause on that one, okay? So earlier this year, Vice President Mayberry and I had the opportunity to visit our Food Services Central Kitchen. Sure, we'll talk more about that visit later. We're still lucky as trustees. We get to visit, we get to visit schools, we get to see where the books are held. We get to have so much fun. There are very few things that really stop me in my tracks, but Amber was one of them. So when we were touring the central kitchen and we were seeing that whole facility, and there is so many wonderful things to share about that, but seeing how they do that work, how Amber does and leads that work for every single one of these students, for every single morsel, every single bite is so important for so many different reasons. And then also the way that you have all the kids' photos up because you want to know exactly who you are carefully preparing and packaging that meal for. And not only is it enough that they do all of that work to make sure that everything that they get is exactly perfect for their needs, they also package it or choose what they're making so that it matches as closely as possible to what every other student is eating so that they don't feel different, even if their needs are unique. And I just want you to know that watching you that day, my mom heart, Amber, my mom heart just exploded seeing what you do and what your team does. And I'm so very lucky that my family does not have any food allergies, but I do have friends that do have food allergies. And to know that our parents can send their children to the Washoe County School District and know for sure that they're going to be fed with something that is not going to cause a medical issue is incredibly valuable. And that just really goes to show all the love that we show our kids, even with people that may not see them face-to-face every day. So just wanted to share that story very quickly and let you know how deeply that touched me.
I mean, just to say it again, what she does in her department, it is crucial. I mean, if everyone else is having a burrito, we need to find a compliant burrito that matches that special diet. And she takes it very seriously. So just kind of looking at nutrition services that are whole, the goals for this year, you know, obviously, we're looking to cook more from scratch. You know, we're really trying to change the procession of school lunch. All these pitchers up here are actually from this school year that have been served at our schools either during opening weeks or the past few weeks. These are all from this current school year. So we want to focus on center of the plate, what's being served, the sides and the sauces more from scratch, a lot more fresh vegetables, vegetables, steamed vegetables, and items like that. We also want to provide as much culinary training as possible. We're lucky enough to, you know, to be selected for this contract, and we're able to bring in three chefs. That's quite a bit. So we have a lot of culinary experience that are going out to the sites every single day, working with these kitchen managers to assist them. And obviously, we want to continue to evolve, we want to improve. You know, we feel we're doing a great job, but what are we going to do tomorrow? So it's all about, you know, to continue to drive progress. Some of the opening highlights. When we were awarded this contract, it was a big deal, let's be honest. Washoe is a large district, top 60 in the nation, central kitchen. We were all in day one. When we find out we were awarded, so day one, we came in, opening highlights, we knew this is a large ship. Right off the back, we came in and did three days of manager training. Corporate sent 10 additional staff members that were helping us open. So they were here the first week. The second week, we were able to get five additional staff members. So these are all general managers, directors, chefs, regional VPs and above, people that have all 10-plus years of experience in K-12 to help open this district with a bang, with success. We were able to hit 21 of the secondary sites the first week to provide that kitchen manager with an onsite SFE person, which took a lot. And then, you know, immediate, immediate positive feedback. Some of the things, I can't read it. You know, like, I've been here 23 years, and this is the best menu we've had. My students can smell the fresh food being made in the kitchen. Immediate feedback, but I think the more important thing is the staff felt supported.
I'm going to interject on that unexpectedly, Tim. I just can't emphasize that enough. We're going to talk a lot tonight about change, bringing on a new vendor, implementing new menus, scratch cooking. These are changes to processes and habits that are not easy to implement. And kudos to SFE and Tim and the leadership that they've provided in guiding this change. But I really also want to recognize the openness and willingness of our nutrition services staff across the district and every one of these school sites for being willing to embrace something different that's challenging. But ultimately, you know, almost all of them work in food service for a reason. They enjoy the work and they would love the opportunity to do something different and special and better. And that's the type of partnership that leads to success, and that's what we've seen so far this year. Thanks.
A little bit more on the operations. You'll see the common theme in almost every slide. More scratch-made food equals positive feedback. Emphasis on culinary support, student-driven menus. We've been lucky enough to already do two taste testings. We did one at Billinghurst and one at AACT already. These are some of the results that came back from Billinghurst. And then, to meet the green initiative, we've been able to reduce more of the plastic, 60% of the recyclable products at the middle aisle. We brought in more paper, more paper products for the secondary levels than last year. So we're really focused on that to accomplish that goal. We did set up a little display, too, in the...
And thank you for that. There's been a lot of public advocacy around plastics and reusable utensils, and that makes a big, big difference. So I just want you to know that that was immediately noticed and very appreciated, at least by many of the families in the District D schools, so thank you.
And that's Paul Stanley back there, that's his number-one goal. I talk to him about it every single day. Show me a new paper product.
Well, the Roy-Gottlieb Green Team, I don't speak for them, but I'm pretty sure that I would say that they would definitely give you a standing ovation for that, among many other parents who really care about. And we care about that because that's how we can be good stewards of the earth.
So this is going to be a fun slide, staff spotlight. Who doesn't want to spotlight their team? So Stephanie is here, she's currently the kitchen manager at Pacolo. She's been with us 2005, aka 20 years. This is from her admin staff, Scott. "She creates a safe, welcoming environment, provides attentive, compassionate service to all students." I wanted to read that directly because I ad lib a lot, but that was directly from her field suit. So she's worked at Green Beret, Cold Springs, Mount Rose, and she's at Pacolo. And everyone knows Pacolo is, you know, we have to have the utmost care there and with special diets and all the needs. So Stephanie, congratulations.
I think I already did that, Stephanie. I saw the way you looked at me. It's so no one ever knows who I'm going to do the, who I'm going to offer the pledge to. So don't worry, it's not like somebody didn't tap you on the shoulder.
You're right, you're right.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, of course, you see, I've been with the school district for 20 years. I do love what I do, and I know a couple of you already here. I think I've had Christine's daughter, I've seen her since she was little, now she's grown. And I just love that, going out and seeing the kids grow and feeding them and making their day is just what we love to do. I mean, I'm glad I chose Pacolo, it was just a challenge, and I thought I was going to be scared of it, but it ended up being where I needed to be. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Ernst to announce a recognition. Stephanie, don't go too far.
So Stephanie, on behalf of Washoe County School District, we just wanted to award you with a Spotlight Award for the work that you do at Pacolo, that the work that you've done for 20 years in Washoe County School District, the work that you do for our students and families. We're very grateful, and we just want to award you with this recognition. We're going to go ahead and take a picture. We're going to go ahead and take a picture and we would just like to celebrate you and the work and your accomplishments. So, thank you, Stephanie.
I'm just going to, thank you. I just wanted to ditto what was said about Ms. Stephanie. Sorry. She's been, like she mentioned, she's been in our family's life for a very long time. And my daughter started kindergarten at Mount Rose and still very fondly asks about Ms. Stephanie. And when I mentioned that she's at Pacolo now, she said, "I can't wait. I need to go visit her." And that is the relationship that is made in those moments, because that's when kids learn so much about life and their life skills is in the lunchroom. And we don't often talk about the work that is done and the learning that is done in the lunchroom. And our lunch staff and our kitchen staff absolutely need to be commended for ensuring that atmosphere is safe for our students and brings that opportunity for them to learn. And Ms. Stephanie is absolutely someone who does that. So, thank you. Well deserved.
This is, besides staff recognition, this is my favorite slide of the deck. So, you know, food service, school lunch. We want to change the procession. It's good. And it all starts with student engagement. This is this year, this is the one at Billinghurst. So, this was our first taste testing. And how we're going to change that perception, that engagement, is through taste testings, roving chefs, farmers markets, the taste tells, taste, that's a tongue twister. We'll just skip the taste buddies. Culinary pop-ups at the secondaries and then menu advisory boards. We want the feedback from administrators, parents, students, teachers, because we want to make a menu that the students want. And what better way to get that? Ask them. So, but student engagement is what I'm all about. I want to be out there. I want to say hi. I want to see what they're eating. If they like it, they can say, "Hey, Mr. Tim." "Hey, Mr. Tim, thumbs up." So, to me, this is what it's all about right here.
So, with the menu advisory board, you were recently recruiting for board members. Can you share a little bit about how you promoted that and then who you were inviting to join the advisory board and what the status is of that?
Yeah, so, we have it scheduled. The menu of ours is going to be in November. We don't have a firm date in November, but we put it out through the, all, Paul let that one, but, what do you call that?
There are department connections to all of our principals several times to promote it to, again, parents as well as staff and students, as well as posting it on our Nutrition Services website. It's open to all. There's not a limitation, nor a prerequisite necessarily, other than, you know, having sampled school food, school lunch would be helpful. But really, you know, just convening that group for somewhat unstructured conversation around feedback is a part of the work that they're responsible for.
So, is that recruiting still going on right now? Or is that, has that already closed and you've chosen your members?
No, it'll be open. And even when the date is set, it'll be put out and anyone can show up day of. We have 23 people that signed up already, which is pretty good. But it will always be open. Even if you don't sign up, you're welcome to come. This is an open event. If you have feedback, if last minute you decide, "I want to go," come on, come on. So, yeah, so, we're really hoping to increase participation through engagement. Looking ahead, you know, we just want to grow this relationship. You know, we don't want to be the vendor. We really want this to be a partnership. We want to be part of Washoe County School District. When people ask me, "What do I do?", I don't say, "Hey, I'm Tim with SFE." I say, "Hey, I'm Tim with Washoe County Food Service." So, we really want to build that relationship, continue to move forward with that. But, you know, we want to nourish, support and prepare the students for success. A full belly fills a hungry mind. That's one of our go-to slogans. So, those are just some more from the taste testing. Just want to thank you again for allowing us the time to present. While we understand a lot's been accomplished, but we still have a long way to go. It's great to be able to sit up here and present, you know, and talk shop. But honestly, all of this wouldn't be possible without the staff. We've received a lot of buy-in. I get to paint the big box, but they get to fill it in. But without the 420 employees that are in the field every single day, none of this would be possible and I wouldn't be sitting here in this tie. So, just want to thank you again for the time, but I really want to highlight all the success we have is due to them. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Ernst.
I just want to take an opportunity first to say thank you to Mr. Circe for his leadership in working with SFE. And SFE coming in and being a real partner with us, to see the food that we're serving and the improvements in the food that we're serving, the waste products that we're reducing. It's really something to be proud of as we're looking at the educational experience we provide for the whole child. And so, we appreciate the work that's being done, appreciate the attitude that every day is an opportunity to keep getting better. And so, I wanted to say thank you to both of you, to the staff and to our Nutrition Services teams. We're grateful for what you do for our students and our families.
I will ditto and add that I visit five to six schools every week and I always visit the lunchroom for several reasons. Number one, I like to thank our food service managers and the staff for what they do. I've learned that, well, this is a little secret that I think everyone knows and sometimes it's hard to hear. But when I ask the students on a regular basis, "What's your favorite part of the day?", it's lunch. And what I observe is they go to lunch and they have fun. Sometimes it's deafeningly loud, but it's organized and they're sharing and they're caring. And I always visit the food. I tell you, it's gotten real hard lately not to ask if I can have something, but it's not for me. I get that. One of these days, though, maybe I'll sneak a taste and sit with the kids. But it is very organized. It's very inviting. The way the colors are arranged seems very purposeful. There's wonderful variety. The smells are fabulous. I will go into the kitchen and I'll watch the workers enjoying their work and chatting and giving me a hard time, and I absolutely love it. The only thing that I continue to worry about, although I think it's gotten better because of everything I just said, I still worry about the food waste. And as Adam Circe stated in the beginning, there's some things we can't control. And one of them is what we have to do in our lunch programs. And I hope that as the food gets better and the fun increases and the relationships grow that we can help our students understand, you know, if you take it, please eat it. And thank you for what you and your team do every day. I wrote it down, because I'm going to use it. "A full belly fuels a hungry mind." That's beautiful. Thank you.
You know, I'm just going to cut through to Chase. Those chocolate chip cookies are damn good. And I'm going to give you my address. If you have any surplus, you can send it to the Mayberry household, but thank you.
And I just wanted to add, so I have a fourth grader. And anecdotally, we were in the last, you know, week of the first quarter. My fourth grader is eating hot lunch, I would say, two to three times more than he ever has from kindergarten up through now. And that's just one household. But truly, he's eating so many different things. And he was actually so excited to try new foods. He was a little bit nervous at first. But he's just off to the races with it. And it makes my life certainly a lot easier too. So, for what it's worth, you get two thumbs up for my nine-year-old.
I love hearing all the stories and the quotes from the kids, and I love that you're doing the taste test. So, is that something that's available regularly for students to give feedback, or is it only on special days?
I mean, it's not available daily, but yes, it is available regularly and we plan to stop by every single school and do one at every single campus.
Yeah. Oh, and yeah, I agree, Dr. Nicolet, that it's a lot of work. I did hear anecdotally from one elementary school that their students had a few items that they did not love and they wanted to give feedback. So, that was why I mentioned that they must have gotten to give feedback at some point and wanted to give more. Because if you ever ask a seven-year-old for feedback, they will give it to you. Keep on giving it to you. So, I was curious how you were managing all the feedback that the kids want to give, because they love that.
Very diligent.
Good job.
Yeah, no, we manage the feedback. We welcome it all.
Okay.
We sort it. We do it a variety of ways, sometimes by grade group or site level. It just depends how we got it. But, you know, we put out taste testing so we can be there. We also send out QR codes to teachers that they can share. We post them, feedback at each school. So, you know, there's ways. And then, we'll also work on getting drop boxes in at the elementary level. So, kids can just write comment cards and drop them in the box and then those will come back to us. And yeah, obviously, you know, negative feedback or if they didn't like it, we're tallying them up. And if it's enough, you know, we'll consider removing it from the menu.
I mean, it may have been something green, so, you know, I don't know. Just knowing kids.
We have got quite a bit of positive feedback.
Yes, I hear more positive than anything. I just was curious. And then, I just have one other question about the reducing of plastic. I was in the classroom when we had warmed up pancakes in plastic bags and that was what our kids got for breakfast. So, I'm so happy about the scratch cooking and the more opportunities to reduce plastic. And I'm just curious what the next plans are. If you have anything on the horizon that you're really trying to work on to reduce that waste in the cafeterias.
We started with the paper and so, our next goal is to get the rest of the dispensers out so that the students can choose either a fork or a spoon versus having to take a whole spork, napkin and straw, because not everyone wants a straw. So, we're trying to individualize that. And then, after that, it'll be, we'll kind of circle back and we're going to have to really have to think about how we're going to focus on the elementary schools, because that's a whole different game plan with how the food is delivered.
Sure.
And we have to keep the food safe in the truck. So, but our next focus, after we get out the individual silverware, plastic ware, so that hopefully they only take what they want, will be a push on the elementaries.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
All right, an idea. So, we visit schools. And many of the elementary schools are, they either have or they are starting Student Voice. And at some of the schools I've visited, the new Student Voice groups have been trying to brainstorm on things that they could take on. So, I have a feeling you will be met with a lot of interest. And I'm sure also at the secondary level as well too. But those elementary school kids and those student groups that they have, you know, they'll be really excited to be involved with this.
Yeah, we're excited to work with the Student Voice. Adam helped us out with that a few weeks ago. So, we're looking forward for that type of engagement.
All right. Well, thank you so much. This was an amazing presentation. And thank you so much, Chief Circe, for bringing this and for hosting all of us who have ever visited the Central Kitchen. It is a sight to behold and we see some pretty cool things. But refrigerators, the sizes of like a department building, trucks being loaded, being sent off. I mean, this is not, this is an entire operation. Hundreds of thousands of meals being served every month. I mean, a million meals is not unheard of. The partnership with the food bank and so many different organizations. We also help provide lunch to several of our charter schools. I mean, it just goes on and on. It is a remarkable operation and it's something to truly be so proud of. So, thank you all, for all of you that came. Like, this is your moment as well too. All right. Thank you. Well, we love it. All right, that closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02. This is the Presentation, Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Direction on the 2023 Facility Modernization Implementation, Including Recommended Projects Related to Echo Loder Elementary School, Libby Booth Elementary School, Veterans Memorial Elementary School and Roger Corbett Elementary School, and Approval of a Study to Determine Options Suitable for Consolidated Administrative Facility Model as Part of the Administrative Facility Master Plan. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us here Myriaca Smith, Principal at Blue Cottage of Cannon Design, and again, our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Circe. Welcome so much and thank you for being here.
Thanks again. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present this important progress update on our Facility Modernization Plan, or FMP, and our Administrative Facility Modernization Plan, or AFMP. As President Smith mentioned, my name's still Adam Circe. I'm your Chief Operating Officer for the district. And with me tonight, who will introduce herself in a little more depth later, Myriaca Smith, Principal Consultant with our partner, Blue Cottage. So, we've been hard at work for some time now, but we haven't been back to the board with comprehensive updates. And that's really what we want to walk through with you all tonight, as well as detailing some recommended motions. And that's really what we want to walk through with you all tonight, as well as detailing some recommended motions, which will inform some of our next steps. Following that, we'll close with a summary of our commitments and some of our specific next steps and of course, open the floor for discussion and possible action.
Um, before we get started, I just want to make sure that we set the cadence for this. Would you like to get through that first section and we'll hold any of our questions for clarification until that breakpoint to give you the opportunity to go through that section in its entirety?
Indeed, I appreciate that. Um, there is a pre-scripted breakpoint for a little discussion, but I think if it pleases the board, it might be preferable that we actually conclude presenting of all of the slides before, um, any recommended motions are considered. So thank you for that. Just continuing though, I wanted to, um, ground ourselves on the fact that we are actually rapidly underway with the implementation of the FMP approved some two years ago, and this will continue. But always important that we ground everything that we do in the objective to provide better opportunities to all of our students and our staff across all of our facilities. That's really the primary objective of the FMP. But also noting that the FMP is about more than just the buildings. It's about the people and the communities that these buildings reside in. Implementing this FMP is about more than just construction. It's really about change and it's change that involves humans. And so how we interact with each other through the implementation of this change is going to be as large of an aspect of our potential success as the steel and the concrete that actually goes into these structures. So laying the foundation of all of our FMP projects is the fundamental expectation that to be truly successful, all of these investments should create improved and expanded opportunities for students, staff, and the community. That is really what we mean when we say the phrase trade-up scenarios. As you know better than most, few pieces of public infrastructure have the potential to change the fabric of our community more than a school. What we are planning and delivering expects to serve as a catalyst for positive change across the district for generations. Really want to lay that expectation out when we start to talk about the scale that we are already embarking upon. In less than two years since the official approval of our FMP, we now have over 10 projects in some state of active design or construction, which already represents nearly a half billion dollars of additional investment of local funds into this crucial public infrastructure. So that's pretty exciting and sometimes, uh, it can also seem pretty overwhelming. So some of our work here this evening is intended to establish a more familiar pattern of thoughtful and inclusive FMP implementation as we continue this work. But really back to the reasons for the FMP, you've all seen versions of this slide before. No matter how you slice it, there's just not as many students in our county as there used to be and that is not a fleeting trend. But how we respond to this reality is what will determine by and large the quality of opportunities that our students and staff can be provided. As you also know far too well, the board is always asked to confront impossible balancing acts of competing interests. Through capital investments and a willingness to embrace change, we believe we can resolve these rising costs and declining enrollments with our long-term responsibilities in a way that it's not all about less on one side. Simply put, lower enrollment can often mean fewer programs and opportunities per school and almost always means less efficient use of our limited resources. However, through unification of different neighborhoods, we believe we can offer more robust support to our students and staff through more efficient use of those resources. And by embracing this positive change opportunity, that we can create a future where our community actually receives more, not less. So again, to create simplicity, we want to characterize our FMP as being composed of effectively three major project types. Reconstruction involves the, uh, an entirely new building being constructed as it sounds. Modernization's the most frequent type of project you will see involves major expansions and upgrades to an existing school facility. And repurposing is a closure of a building as a school and then reactivation of it with some other use. The schools listed in the category titled Long-Term Trade-Up will be impacted by one of these three types of projects as future circumstances dictate. And that is to say that the needs for these specific communities in the long-term trade-up category were not immediately known in 2022 and 2023 at the time of the FMP approval. And the district will continue to evaluate these school communities' needs in the coming years. Ultimately, this work will touch every school in the district over the next 15 years and will maintain a commitment to the, that vision of a trade-up scenario for every zone across the county. In each of these project types, these three major project types, we intend to follow a clear sequence of public and transparent events. All of our work must begin with the Board of Trustees and we will have, of course, many interim touchpoints and public approvals required along the way. Before we can begin, initial scoping and design must be approved and that work will then include site and community input to help shape each project with their unique needs and opportunities. This is something that should be expected. Following the completion of the design, we will again be asking the board to approve the initiation of the construction phase. It's during this phase when the most rapid period of action should begin, including not only the physical construction change, but also the details of the human changes, including enrollment rezoning, which also requires board approval, as well as staffing adjustments and the like. During the same period of time, and even after the start of the new school year, the culture, intentional work around culture and community building will be a crucial element of the successful implementation of every one of these projects. So it's important to also understand that all of this work should be expected to take between two and four years across every project. And I want to just highlight not only the somewhat standard key elements of this process, but the public nature, uh, through which it will take place. So again, this process will unfold on every FMP project district-wide over the next decade and a half. And while this change is absolutely unsettling and difficult to many, when we work together in partnership and follow these types of familiar patterns, we believe we can create that positive change together. So zooming out a little bit, when we look in terms of individual projects, we're often focused on the smallest details from project to project and that's what makes those projects special. But it's also critical to inform our work in terms of the entire FMP program of projects, not just a single one. And looking at this entire community and adjacent communities in which a neighborhood school might serve. They are interconnected oftentimes in verticals, sometimes in other intangible ways. So for example, and really what's on the agenda for this portion of the presentation is the fact that today we are reconstructing Vaughn Middle School, as you well know. And we've also received approval from the board to begin the reconstruction of Loder Elementary School. The FMP recommends the associated repurposing of Corbett Elementary at this time, but curiously, it does not recommend coinciding improvements at Booth or Veterans. We have identified this and see this as an opportunity and are here to suggest, a missed opportunity rather, uh, and are here to suggest a more comprehensive and inclusive approach as it relates to these community schools. So specifically, these four elementary schools, Corbett, Loder, Veterans, and Booth, all feed up to Vaughn Middle School and have an average building age of 70 years old or older. And an average enrollment today of about 300 students apiece and, and declining. After analyzing these projects, we today are recommending that the work of the FMP be expanded and accelerated and implemented concurrently across all four schools so as to bring these trade-up scenarios to the entire community sooner and to impact this positive change only once across these neighborhoods. So specifically, what is being proposed is to proceed with the reconstruction of Loder and the repurposing of Corbett effective by the 27, 28 school year. And also to proceed with the modernization of Booth and the repurposing of Veterans also to be effective beginning the 27, 28 school year. The investments at Booth would then be followed by the FMP-recommended full reconstruction in the coming years there as well, but with no rezoning or neighborhood disruptions necessary at that time. This course of action would allow us to bring the positive change to the entire community as a whole, to disrupt them only on one occasion rather than on multiples, and to bring these improvements to these schools in this community much sooner than originally anticipated. So again, this is transformational change and we are seeking to implement it in a predictable pattern across the district in a way that is inclusive of entire communities and their voices. We recognize that this change is very difficult and we seek, we will seek and do seek at every step in this process to respect and honor the legacy of the past while navigating the future together. We have an opportunity to do this across our neighborhood schools in this area in a manner which will create improved and expanded opportunities for students and staff and community. And this is how we will continue to deliver on the true promise of WC1. So we've covered a lot of ground already. I appreciate you, uh, letting me get through these slides. Uh, but just to re-center our presentation, I wanted to highlight again that this is one of our two recommended actions for this evening. A majority vote, however, this afternoon would mean only that staff might return to the board for many subsequent possible actions around items such as closures, rezoning, design and construction contract awards and the like. Such a vote this evening would be a first step only towards an improved and broader implementation across these four elementary schools. So now, if the board chooses, would be a good time to break, um, right before I hand the mic over to Maireika to finish the rest of our presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, President Smith. That was wonderful. I really like the idea of looking at all of that area. The only thing that I'm looking at, it's slide 17, if we could go back to that one. I went to Booth and I mean, thinking back now, at the time, it just seemed like my school, but at the time, it seemed even kind of, I, I don't want to say old or run down because it was kept up very nice, but it just, fuddy-duddy? I don't know. It was, it just didn't, it didn't seem, you know, really cool or, I guess, as a kid. But my, I'm looking at this where it says on Booth, "Modernization completed now, followed by full rebuild in five to seven years." The only thing I'm thinking is, we're going to spend a bunch of money, I'm assuming, to modernize it and then it's going to be probably torn down and rebuilt. So we're actually paying twice for that facility, but I don't know all the ins and outs. That's my question. I'm just likening it, I always like to liken it because sometimes what I'm asking that isn't clear. You've got a car, an old car, and that, it needs a lot of work. And you're going to put a new engine that costs this much money into an old car, but you know in a couple of years, you really are going to need a whole car because the bumpers are falling off and everything else. And now you just spent a bunch of money on a new engine and you should have just bought a new car. I mean, that's the only thing I'm looking at here. It seems like we're, I know we only have so much time and so much money and energy and all of that, but it just seems like money going into something that's going to be torn down in five or seven years is not that long a time.
I appreciate you highlighting that because there is a balance. And I think back to that balancing act slide. I also want to start with your first reaction, that considering the entire community and the impact of this change, uh, on the community as a whole is uniquely important. Our intended, first of all, the modernization scope is definitely going to bring the cool back to Booth. We're going to, that's right. We're going to bring the cool, this is, this is, uh, these are substantial improvements. We're going to ensure that the experience that the Booth community has in the 27, 28 school year and going forward is on par with some of the other elementary school modernizations. There's going to be some additions and some significant improvements into the existing spaces. This is also something that is anticipated or have the ability to absorb within our FMP. I want to be honest and acknowledge that, you know, the future replacement would include the demolition of the existing Booth School and most, if not all, of the investments that we make in it at this time. So I think to be fair, we need to be honest about the fact that this is an acceleration of the trade-up scenario for the inclusion of this entire community to do it now and bring these benefits to our school district and this community as soon as possible. And there is a trade-off in terms of capital investments, but we feel that on balance, as opposed to waiting, uh, the fact that we have the means in which to do this, it is worth the investment now, uh, to bring to the community once and much sooner.
Um, and if I can help with that too, so this is actually, a version of this has happened in quite a few District D schools. Pine is an example. Um, we know Pine is in its final year and Facilities has been working on that building every year, including this summer and all the time. Same thing with the, uh, the old Vaughn that is also in its final year. We recently worked with one of our partners in education to improve the, the gym there. And so maybe because, um, I've seen this not to the degree that's being suggested necessarily for Booth, but I've been watching the investments of those schools that are also slated for closure because we still have to make sure that we provide the best, um, environment for them, even though there's going to be new facilities for those schools too. But I think that that's a really good, good question. But I just wanted you to know that we've also made other improvements, for example, on Pine and Vaughn along the way.
I can't help but ask, could we just move forward and, and just skip the, all of the in-between stuff and just jump and just build the school since that's where we know we've got to go? Could we?
I mean, just to answer that question directly, there's a good deal of design work that is necessary to, to build a new school, even though it looks like a similar floor plan. So, uh, the answer to your question is not without delaying the implementation by more than a school year. This is the construction solution that gets all of these changes completed by the 27, 28 school year. A different construction solution would take longer, uh, to implement, would delay these benefits to the community for more than a school year.
Are you good?
Yes.
Okay, I just want, no, no, I just want to make sure you were, you were done. I, um, thank you. Thank you, President Smith. Um, I, I want to, I want to just highlight one thing on this slide and then, um, go back a couple of slides. I really, really appreciate the forethought on the one-time rezoning. I think that is a reflection of really thought, a lot of thought put into this because I know that we've given that feedback over the last, um, several other projects that we've been working on in the last nine to 10 months or more. Um, and so I just really, really appreciate, um, staff and everybody involved in this process taking that step back and saying, "Do we want to rezone once or do we want to rezone multiple times?" So I, I just wanted to, um, applaud you and the team for that. And I would love to go back to, sorry, I'm finding the slides. Um, I think it's eight and nine. And I think that, I guess I just want to provide this as an opportunity for, um, for us to just have a quick conversation about why consolidating schools provides a richer and more updated learning environment for our students and what type of programs that we can provide our students. can provide our students, because I do feel like we've gotten some community feedback that people love their really small schools, and we've already talked about the financial benefits of merging these schools, but what we really haven't talked about is the things like the STEM labs and the collaborative learning spaces that we can provide. And so I just, I just wanted to give us a second to highlight that and talk about that. And I know that Superintendent Ernst's team has been working really, really hard on the curriculum side of invest, you know, really looking at all of the programs we have and learning in a modern way. And we've spent a lot of time talking about the financial aspects of this, but we haven't talked about the very specific academic aspects of why an elementary school with 600 kids or 500 to 600 kids is, is a totally different ballgame than an elementary school of 200 kids. So I, I just wanted to give that as a tee-up, maybe.
Thank you, Trustee Hall. I think that's a good point. When we do look at trading up, I think programming is certainly a big part of this. I think that's really what this, this slide is illustrating. Right now, I think about a couple of examples just within our own district. We, we've done some work out in the North Valleys, where we have taken some of the computer labs and we have converted those to STEM labs, and just trying to be more intentional about, about the modern programming, having our buildings evolve with the times and the needs of our students. So I think it's a great point that you bring up, and I think really that slide there is illustrating that when we do the consolidations in the way that's being described, that we do have the opportunity to wide, widen the programming we're offering for our students. And we have seen schools with lesser populations, programs really becoming more narrowed, having to collapse Spanish classes and things of that nature. So I do think it's an important aspect, as we are all considering the idea of trade-up and, and what it brings to our students and families.
Thank you. I am going to, let's see, what slide do I want? Sorry, I'm going through here. So I think that this is a wonderful plan. Over on Slide 16, it has the spokes. I am really grateful that our team is looking at this entire community and working to uplift everyone together. We have made the decision about Vaughan, we are rebuilding the new elementary school in the Smith Ridge area, and we have the plan for Corbett and for Echo Loader, and we should never leave our kids behind. And you can't look at this community and close your eyes to the other half of it. And what I love about this plan is everyone rises together, and that is so important. I want to echo what Trustee Hall said about zoning, even when there are new schools and that is an exciting moment for a community, that's still a flutter of, "Where am I going to go? How is this going to affect me?" And so to be able to do this comprehensively for the community one time demonstrates, demonstrates the respect that they've been asking around zoning, and it also recognizes that, I don't think responsibly, we can offer an improved educational experience for half of that community and leave the other two school communities behind. So I very much understand the logic around the modernization and the rebuild. I'm going to plug right now that my hope is, is that the rebuild is more on the five-year plan than the seven-year plan, but it does give those communities the opportunity to also have a voice in what's built. With that said, and I know Chief Zimmerman is somewhere, I also, when we scope these out and we begin to plan, it is really important that we notice some of the feedback that has come out of other elementary schools around play structures, shade, the use of the labs inside the buildings, and that we, we plan accordingly with all of those lessons along the way. But I love that this uplifts the entire community together, and it doesn't devalue anyone by saying, "You're going to need to wait longer than the other." I'm so very, very grateful that the team is respecting this whole community as a whole and uplifting it. So I, I'm just really, really pleased with that. And it's also the full promise of WC1, and I, I don't want veterans in Libby Booth to wait. I want them to be able to have that new experience, that modernized experience in school year 2027, knowing that once the zoning is done and the communities who know they're going to be going to school there will then begin the process of imagining what their new community school is going to look like, whether that opens five or seven years later. So I just want to say thank you so much. This is really an evolution in our position. It respects that this entire community deserves the best places to learn for their kids, and it also creates a community hub. And I know that we're going to give very careful consideration about what the needs are in these communities. Like we know at Veterans, they have a very active food bank building right now that communities and schools runs, and so I'll just ask that we pay very, very close attention to what all of the needs are as we scope and design, whether the modernized or rebuilt schools, what they're going to be offering to those communities. So thank you so much. Very, very well done.
Thank you for that discussion. I want to go ahead and continue the presentation and hand the mic over to my colleague, Marika.
Good afternoon, Trustees. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst. I'm Marika Smith. I am a principal with Blue Cottage of Canada Design. We are the partners with the district on the administrative facilities modernization plan, the AFMP. We, you'll see we've underlined the A to differentiate the two. I'm appreciating the opportunity to really talk to you about the work that we've been doing to date, and we're, we're at an inflection point, so we want to share some of that with you. And we're now dovetailing many of the thinking, much of the thinking that we're doing with the FMP implementation work, so I think it's a critical moment that we talked to you today. So as appropriate, the district focused its efforts on really improving schools first as part of the FMP, and that's, of course, that's, that's the way it should be. But the need to address serious barriers to administrative operations was also identified in the FMP. So last spring, Blue Cottage was brought onboard and embarked on the AFMP to address these challenges and outline strategies for improving operations. So today, we'll be sharing an update about where we are with that plan, our preliminary findings. Again, we're really at the sort of midpoint of, of our investigation today, and we will be recommending a couple of options for future, for future study and feasibility. So at the end of the presentation, we will be requesting a motion related to a consolidated facility model. That will be a recommended strategy, and then some options related to that that we'd like to further investigate. So we are at, as I said, the midpoint through our process. We're developing strategies and planning scenarios. Again, sort of this is an investigative stage. We began work last spring studying really the current state, really understanding what was happening, what the, what the existing facilities were like, how that really came up against the functions that we desired of those, of those departments. And then we really spent a lot of time developing a set of guiding principles that really would guide the work and evaluation of different scenarios. We then began assessing whether the current state was able to accommodate the future needs, because we didn't want to rest with today. We're really trying to think about what can be the right use of, for facilities in the future. And so really then started to hone in on what changes might be needed to improve the operational environment. So with your approval today, we will continue to investigate options and develop detailed planning scenarios, again, with the hope of coalescing around a preferred option this winter. So why are we here to begin with? Why have an administrative modernization plan? I think really, most importantly, it's that the poor state of the existing facilities was really impairing and is impairing the district's ability to serve its primary constituents, and that's the, its primary customers are students, schools, and communities. And that really, with old and inflexible facilities, outdated facilities that weren't really able to accommodate modern workflows, and then really also this aggregated facilities. There is five sites across the district, so you have departments split up, and so that's a condition that we really wanted to look at as how that was impeding operations. And then generally not reflecting the professionalism that really kind of was, would be emblematic of the work that the, that the central administrative functions were doing. So all of that equals really kind of an adverse impact on staff, and staff is a big investment for the district, and we really wanted to support that work. It also results in low morale, so that's, that's felt in many ways, but also impairs performance and the delivery of service, and that's the primary reason that we really wanted to improve the operations. So the district's central administration stuff, that, it represents a real cross-section of folks, and a lot of often not seen, but, but really central work that's done. It includes the superintendent's office, the facilities department, many academic support functions, counseling services, special education, and of course, the Board of Trustees' meeting room where we are today. And their role is really primarily to serve school sites, students, and families. Over time, the district has accommodated space needs in a very organic way, so today functions, as I said, are really distributed across five locations throughout the district. To really start this work, we had a very intentional engagement process with many, many different departments across the district. So we met with each of the Board of Trustees, with leadership, with families, school staff, as well as community partners and administrative staff across all levels, and we engaged in different ways. Interviews, we had site tours as well to make sure that we were really not just looking at the state of the facilities, but how those facilities actually met operations and flow. We had visioning workshops with leadership and the surveys I mentioned, and then really started crunching some numbers in terms of really what, what standards were there for workplace programming, because part of it is really understanding how do we develop a space program as well. So it, it's not surprising that we find ourselves here. So while the district has grown rapidly since inception in the 1950s, the administrative facilities have not kept pace. And so when 425 East Ninth Street opened in 1963, the city of Reno was only 100,000 people, and the enrollment in the school district was under 10,000 students. So you can see sort of, that's a very different time, not that long ago, but definitely not envisioned at the scale we have today. Today, Reno's population is five times that, and the district's enrollment is almost about 60,000 students. Central administration needed to serve that population, and that need has grown. So when we, when we looked through all the sites, and there were, we spoke with many different folks and staff, you know, one thing ran true for everybody, and that really had to do with the inflexibility of the work environment, spaces being static, lacking natural light, and providing limited choice, limited access to meeting rooms, the, the sort of basics of communication were really not evident or struggling in many respects because the infrastructure was simply not there. So that really, all of that combined really impacts workflow, and it would, when it comes to public-facing operations as well, families and school-based staff are often, they've cited that they were confused as to where things were in the district, where to go, because of either poor signage or the fact that there was multiple offices throughout the district that they had to go to. And the board, facilities, while upgraded, are still not at the scale and professionalism that is, would be befitting of, of work that happens here. So what does good look like? And it's not just good from an external observation, it's really wanting to fit with the culture of the district is and how it would perform better, and it really has to do with choice and variety, having spaces that really fit the type of activity and work that is done, and having the tools to do it in also brightly lit spaces that sort of can help inspire that creativity as well as serendipity. I talked a little bit about the sort of disaggregated nature of the departments, and about 90% of the departments are actually split up across different locations. So you can only imagine sort of what that does in terms of really just flow of information, being able to get things done in an efficient manner. So that really is one of the sort of central issues that we wanted to look at, because in some instances, there are organizations that plan for that, and they plan for a disaggregated culture partially because of a large geographic area. And so we wanted to look at that because Washoe County School District is a pretty big geographic area. So we looked at a couple of different models in our investigation, and one of them, we're going to call it the decentralized network, and that's really looking at no prominent facility. Right now, we think of Ninth Street as the hub, but in a network model, you're really decentralizing everything so that geographically folks get access to a multiple, multiple services. And that requires a lot of, you know, sort of modern systems and communications and technology to make that work well. So we, we looked at that model. We looked at what we're calling a hub-and-spoke model, and so that in some form is what you have today with the hub and then different spokes, but in a hub-and-spoke model, you really have a satellite where there you have, sorry, you have a hub with satellite functions that are really feeding into that hub. Because of the sort of, everything has a little bit of everything, it's not really serving as that true hub-and-spoke model, because you don't have one prominent location. And then finally, we looked at a consolidated model, and that would really be bringing all of the departments that we're looking at into one place. And given many different things that we considered, it seemed to be really the best model in terms of really bringing communication and modern workplace to the, to the level that we thought we needed to bring it, and, and making sure that the central piece of it, consolidation and collaboration, rather, as well as having external stakeholders, families, students be able to navigate and understand where to go was also a very big consideration. So we would come with you, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, really, we, we felt that a consolidated strategy was really the best way to go, and that's the one that we will wanted to move forward with looking at options around. We think it really would reduce also long-term operational costs, so it brings a lot of efficiency. It's not just about collaboration, but it also has to do with, you know, just basic efficiency of operations, and also really providing that uniformed service experience for families, schools, and the community. And then again, that collaboration piece, which was central to sort of staff wellness and morale. So, once we sort of, as a group, decided that we thought the consolidated option would be the best way to go, we wanted to look at really what school sites or what sites the district had in its inventory. So we looked at both school sites as well as administrative sites to see what might be a good fit for an administrative headquarters. Before we did that, we, we wanted to kind of make sure that we were doing it according to a pretty rigorous set of criteria, so that we weren't just sort of having, you know, saying, "Oh, I like that one, I like that one." We really wanted to make sure that we could evaluate them as apples to apples. So we looked at, you know, would a developing a consolidated facility on a certain site allow for low risk and a quick timeline, because we knew that this is something that folks really wanted to stand up sooner rather than later. Also, did that site fit the program that we wanted, right? There's size considerations, there's other adjacencies they wanted to think about. We also wanted to consider the FMP, because that's the guiding document in terms of the capital planning for the districts. We wanted to make sure that we would look at those priorities. I think also a big piece of it was, was this centrally located and accessible, not just to staff, but also to families, so thinking about a central location was also critical, fiscally responsible, and by that, not just looking at capital costs, but also looking at operational costs. So we wanted to say, okay, you know, you want, might want to solve one problem, but you create another. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at both of them equally. Also not to do something today that would really curtail us for the future, and that, you know, as, as Adam laid out, there's a very, very intricate network of decision-making, and so we want to make sure that whatever decision we make today is going to be, set us up well for the future. Operational disruption, by that we mean existing school operations, anything from school, schools as well as administrative operations. We wanted to make sure that we would be minimizing that. And then of course, the best for students and families, making sure that we were thinking about what their experience here would be, both from, you know, visiting as well as, you know, is this the best way to shepherd their tax dollars? So we used those criteria to really evaluate multiple scenarios. We really looked at a lot, and, and really applied a rigorous lens, and had it, did the exercise with several different groups, just really to make sure that we weren't just a group of folks that had certain feelings about something. And so really, as we, as we did that, it landed on, you know, some critical pieces that we wanted to consider, one being size, so scale. If, if we would go forward with a consolidated facility, that takes up a lot of space, if you think about all of the different departments that are in the central administrative functions, but then also if you think about the parking required for that, right? And we all know people come up against- And we all know people come up against some parking problems here as well. And there's also some district vehicles to be considered as part of that and different operations. So we wanted to look at two different ways to accommodate the parking. One would be vertical, and so in that instance, you'd need about four and a half acres of a site in order to accommodate both an administrative program as well as its vertical parking, or a surface parking, which would be a lower-cost option, but nonetheless takes up a lot of space of a site. And so we start looking at different options. We wanted to minimize our footprint, thought that that would be a good, a better option. So we looked at, as again, we looked at administrative sites throughout the district and really kind of landed through, through this criteria evaluation on 425 East 9th Street. Not just because it's here, but it really does provide, if you look at all the other administrative sites, it's the most suitable site in terms of scale, as well as central location right off the 80, as well as just sort of, this is a place where people know. It's familiar as well. And when we started looking at high school sites, because that's a large part of the, or inventory is just school sites, we'd looked at elementary school sites, we looked at middle school sites. And then when I talk about that size issue, very few of them really would be at the scale that we would need, and many of them are in sort of deep and residential neighborhoods that would have a bigger impact. So we wanted to look at sort of high school sites that were part of larger, pro-regional We did also want to look at commercial sites, not just look within the inventory, because we know that there's sometimes some great opportunistic ideas out there. And given, given the environment, we wanted to make sure we looked at them. As we did, it became evident that the program would be very difficult to fit, the cost very high. And then when we looked at some co-development options, that ownership model was pretty difficult to figure out, and perhaps would curtail the timeline, which is one of our major considerations. So we disposed of sort of the commercial site investigation, at least for now. So at the end of the day, we're really looking at high school site co-location because of the size that we needed, as well as the geographic accessibility and the regional access, as well as 425 East 9th Street. So those are our sort of, right now, where we're looking for a consolidated option, is that's the kind of inventory we wanted to find it in. So as we look for potential high school locations, again, it was really that central location, and then also with some with available capacity. So when you look within the McCarran Boulevard ring, that's really kind of the sweet spot of where we thought the best access and location would be for the high school sites. And so as Adam talked about, some of the work in thinking about repurposing of Corbett, when we looked at that on the horizon, we really started focusing on Worcester, because that was co-located and it would offer even additional scale to the proposition of putting an administrative headquarters on that sort of site as a complex, as a multi-use complex. So that started kind of our investigation into that option. So again, very early days as we start, and we're going to be requesting more time to study this option, but, you know, very quickly, we wanted to look at where the potential development area could be, towards the northern end of that site, and really activate, activating it, including Corbett. Again, with that highly visible and central location, we thought that that could be a good win for, for the headquarters, and we thought that, you know, with this, that would bring some operational savings as well. But, you know, there are issues, we wanted to make sure, and we're going to be investigating this much further, but looking at campus flow. So the site that we've preliminary looking at, you know, we just wanted to make sure that minimizing potential disruption there and impacting some field space. So any new option and co-location option is going to impact a site, but of course, we want to do that in with the minimal footprint possible, so that's something we want to really investigate as we go forward. In terms of administrative sites, again, we talked about 429 9th Street as having that great central location. But it too is not without its issues as well. We would look towards having a potential development site towards the north in sort of having to phase construction to minimize, as one of our criteria was to minimize disruption to operations. So that's why we placed it on the north, so that we could phase, phase those operations. So, you know, this option, I think, has some pros to it, because it's not impacting any school operations. Its location is familiar, people know it, it's not new. The change impact is not, is not great. But there's also, again, those construction and phasing issues that we wanted to consider and investigate a lot more, and that would also impact operations today, because there would have to be some moving of critical operations on-site, and so we would have to look at where to locate them during construction. So again, I wanted to underscore that this is really the beginning of investigation, certainly not the end. I'm not coming, we're not coming to you requesting a preferred direction. What we would like, though, is to really study, study things further. And so that's, you know, in the next, in the next three to four months, we'd love to just investigate the impact on district and school operations. We want to engage the appropriate stakeholders to make sure that we're really getting all of the viewpoints and input necessary, and being as transparent as possible during the process. We also really want to understand what costs are. I talked about operational and construction costs. Well, those are changing, and it's kind of a dynamic environment, and we wanted to make sure that we're really getting the best, best thoughts there. And then also, again, schedule is a really important aspect of what we're trying to accomplish, because we want to try to get this done quickly. So really understanding what that means when we talk about phasing and schedules, et cetera. And then, of course, making sure that whatever we were doing, we're, you know, being fiscally responsible and being the best stewards of the investment of the constituents as possible. So that's what we are working to do next, is really engage in that work. So I did talk about, we would bring a motion forward to you guys. So that motion is to initiate the next phase of the administrative facilities master plan, focusing on in-depth study of options suitable for a consolidated model. So that's kind of, we really wanted to work around that consolidated model and not keep looking at options having to do with distributed functions. With that, welcome your questions.
Thank you. Trustee Diane here.
Hey.
Slide 37, looks extremely interesting, and I like this kind of detail, and I have no chance of reading it, so maybe you can tell me a little more about it. And then my second question, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm trying to be fiscally sound. Are you going to be requiring additional dollars to continue with the next phase? Thank you.
I apologize to your first point yet, this is a little, a little bit murky. It was really there to demonstrate the process that we went through, not to investigate all the, all of the different sites we looked at, many of them no longer are being considered. But we really wanted to show kind of how we heat-mapped our pros and cons, the red being things that we didn't think were positive, the green being things we thought were positive and pros, and the, the yellow or orange rather being kind of eh.
Believe it or not, I like to read these kinds of charts, but I will let that go. Thank you very much. I can see you did a lot of work, and I trust what you just said. So again, to the continuing our work and need for more finances?
We're currently looking at investigating the work without additional resources. That was to the point of engaging with staff, et cetera. That was definitely part of our original scope, so I'll leave it to Adam to maybe answer that in more detail.
I don't want, excuse me, don't need you to flip back to slide 23, but that was the one with the different colored circles and the catchy Z-E terms to describe the different phases in the process. My point is, Blue Cottage is currently scoped to take this study and master plan work through the entirety of these phases up to preferred alternative recommendation. That said, these options may have unique threads that may warrant different tools, so I don't want to completely pin ourselves in entirely. These, as we investigate these options, different needs of engagement and study, specific study, may warrant different resources. But Blue Cottage is scoped through this entire process currently, and I also kind of want to emphasize that the process is a master plan only. It is intended to take us to a preferred alternative or site selection. It is not necessarily full detailed design. So while there will be many important questions that will need to be asked and investigated at an appropriate degree of detail, they are not necessarily scoped to answer every single one of those questions with absolute certainty. I hope you can appreciate that vagueness, this is a planning-level engagement, a substantial one at that, and we're merely halfway through their scope at this point.
I appreciate that, and thank you for pointing out this slide, that we will go through to realization and that endpoint, for sure. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm a supporter of the consolidated model, so when a family comes to any of our sites, they need something for their kid. And it is so much better when they can walk through the door and have a meeting, and that staff member can say, "You know what, I'm going to contact Sarah in counseling. We're going to reach out to Doug in IT," although I know Doug is really in HR. But, and for a family to be able to walk through the door and to have the support they need in one place, where people can get on the phone and say, "We got you, people are going to come down," rather than driving all around, is very much the service that we want to show our families, who again, are coming here at a time of any type of need for their kid. So I think that that is excellent. Do want to put in my two cents, I prefer the vertical parking that provides the administrative building on four to five acres rather than 10 to 11. We know Reno is on the list among the fastest-warming cities in America. Surface-ground parking takes a lot of the space that could otherwise be used more efficiently for trees, among other things. So I do recognize there's a cost there, I know you will do that analysis, but I do want to put in my two cents that I think whenever we can condense parking and offer more trees, greenery, a better use of the land will also allow us other opportunities. But otherwise, I think that this is very well done, and I look forward to seeing what the analysis comes back with in a few months.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what President Smith said, yeah, a central facility, rather, it's a city hall or a county government facility, especially one that's aged, and there's so many that are aged. I mean, this building is older than I am, it doesn't really lend itself to a very good first impression of what we know is, in my opinion, a world-class school district. So I certainly embrace the notion of a consolidated government building, if that's the appropriate term, headquarters, you know, whatever the case may be, I think it's going to lift us up, and I think our administrators and our specialists and those that work at our satellite locations deserve that. And we're in a, we're in a position with the WC1 funds to do that, which is a luxury that a lot of, a lot of districts and states don't have, so, thank you.
One second. We have Clerk Woodley, I believe, on the line.
While you're bringing him on, if I could so boldly interject, I do want to take the opportunity to highlight that currently in our capital improvement plan, our CIP, this project is programmed financially to be funded not with WC1 funds. The WC1 funds will be directed towards our school projects, and that its other revenues, primarily property taxes and the like, other capital funds that will be used to fund any administrative facility investments. It's a subtle distinction, I'm not trying to, you know, correct, but I think it's an important one I want to make on the record. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say ditto what Madam Chair stated, I believe in the one-stop shop. Here in Reno, we need to go vertical, so I appreciate that as well. I don't want to get too much in the weeds, I know we're supposed to stay up to 30,000-foot level, but I think this is great. Thank you for identifying a missed opportunity and realizing, hey, you know, let's step back, let's bring this back before the board, and get the full approval to move forward and assess, and come back to us with your findings, and I think it's a great idea, and I just want to express my gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. This, this is amazing, this ton of work. I, I would like to say I like the vertical also, because I genuinely love this area. I, I love where we're at too, but I think even more greenery would be great. And then it also, it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, it would, if we did go vertical, then we'd have some other spaces in case we did need to grow down the road for whatever. So I like that, where we're not hemmed in, and if we go vertical, then we might have room for other stuff if we needed it. But, I mean, parking is an ugly thing, it really is, but, I mean, it's a necessary thing. You want people to be able to access the building, and this building definitely is fuddy-duddy. It definitely could, yeah. I'm liking that fuddy-duddy. The only, I mean, I'm, I'm almost close to that fuddy-duddy that we're talking about here, but, yeah, and the age thing, but I, I really like that vertical. Thank you.
All right, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello, guys. My name is Paul Navaduran, I'm a member of the vice board for Ward 3. There you go. So, so I wanted to talk about the FIP first, so I do support getting all the school consolidated sooner rather than later, because you should not let the booth and veterans behind. We know that enrollment is declining, they need something changed, that's sign of, they need something changed sooner rather than later. And we want to make sure the communication on marketing and communication were affected, because we need, so, we have a meeting, we need to set up the meeting for those families, those community, that they feel comfortable to move it up to, to a new Lower Roman School, modernized, beautiful elementary school. So it should not be left behind. We know their enrollment is declining, we know the Centurino era populated decline, because, because of, see, we know, had not invested in those area for decades, so now is time to invest those schools, but the veterans community as well, so, thank you. And my bigger question, I like the admin facility consolidation model, I will support the consolidation model, because we need to have more central location, we are, we are one team, not individual, so we are part teams. So I invite the vocal, vocal parking, I'm supportive of vocal parking, because we're a fast warming city and a little climate change. We want to make sure have vocal parking, and make sure that have a mono space possible so the Worcester High School can rebuild, so it should not have a fat, so, I know, I know that enrollment is declining, but we never know, they could rebuild or consolidate schools, so, so I will support a new alma building, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
That's all I have for this item.
All right, so I'll bring it back here, colleagues, there's a combined recommended motion, if anyone would be so inclined, or we can certainly continue the conversation. Vice President Mayberry?
I'm ready to make a motion if you want to entertain that. Yeah, I'll move to, the board of trustees directs the superintendent to proceed with the facilities modernization plan, processes, projects, and implementation related to Echo Loder Elementary School, Roser Corbett Elementary School, Libby Booth Elementary School, and Veterans Memorial Elementary School facility improvements ahead of the 2027, 2028 school year, and to initiate the next phase of the administrative facilities plan, focusing on in-depth study of multiple options suitable for a consolidated model.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, we have a second by trustee Nicolet. On the motion, I'll just say thank you so much for showing this entire community that every single child that lives there deserves the best educational environment we can give Seeing no other lights on, trustee Nicolet, did you have something to say or no? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I gave you that chance if you did. All right, all those in. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, Marika and Chief Cersei, we appreciate you very, very much. Very excited to see what comes of all of this. All right, everyone, that closes item 3.02 and section three in its entirety, and brings us now to section four, our reports, starting with item 4.01, our student representatives' report. Maya, thanks for being with us today.
Good afternoon. So our students just got off of a much-needed fall break, so there's not too much to report on. A lot of our dual-credit classes have had their midterms, and I've found that many of my peers have found success with that, haven't heard too many negative things about that. One thing that was pointed out in the last item was the modernization, and I just thought I would put some input onto that. At Damani, we had a West Wing added on to our school, which is just, the entire thing's significantly much fancier than the rest of our school, and we found that our students respect it more. It's less dirty, our bathrooms are considered the nice bathrooms over there, and students typically behave better in the West Wing. Just a positive to the modernization that's been going on. And that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you so much, Maya. That closes item 4.01 and brings us now to item 4.02, our board reports. And we will go ahead and start with trustee Westlake.
I did have some pictures. So lots of good stuff going on. This was at the Rise Academy ribbon cutting, and just a beautiful building, and some of the other pictures, they, oh, I love that picture. I love that picture of us, Vanna White. They have an amazing childcare there. That was one of my favorite spaces in that building. Oh, that, now we're jumping to construction career day. That was very cool. One thing, I've said it before and I'm going to keep saying it, we need to increase the pipeline for our trades. Every single industry in the trades, electricians, operating engineers, HVAC, all of that, oh, that was my little buddy, they're all saying that there's going to be a shortage of workers. So I think we really need to be purposeful and keep that in mind. That's what moves our community is building and repairs and electrical wiring, all of that, so I think it's important for us to think about in the career. I also went to the Hispanic Festival. Oh, that was, I got to mention Abd. He was a North Valley student, and he took that picture for me and his friends. I couldn't hear very well, because there was like, bum-bum-bum-bum, hammering and drilling, and it took me probably about five minutes to get his name, Abd, so I wanted to do a shout-out to Abd. I went to the Hispanic Festival at Sparks Middle School. They were also, there's the daycare, and, oh, wait, we got to see the next one, hopefully. There is our student, President Smith. I swear that table was almost the perfect size for her, because she's so tiny. But they were also at Sparks Middle School celebrating the great attendance achievement that they have had success with, so I like to shout-out when we're attacking a chronic absenteeism. I went to the Auto Museum and went around to the booths there. These are groups that support our need, children with special needs, not just physical and educational, but just any kind of need you can imagine, there's a spot for that. There is music therapy, which I just want, parents with special need children, music and dance movement are such an amazing thing for children with special needs. I mean, it just opens up doors and windows for those children. Thank you.
Except for my stuff from last time, so I don't know if you still have that. No, that's okay. Well, I enjoyed a few days off with my children during fall break. Before that, I have been quite busy with lots and lots of school visits, and I just wanted to just shout-out all of the really, really hard work that our teachers and staff are doing to encourage kids to come to school and encourage families to be a part of the school communities. Every single school I've been at, I'm just so incredibly appreciative, because I do know how hard everybody there works, so just a shout-out to that. And I am very much looking forward to our Indy Talks tomorrow with our very own superintendent. So that's what we've got going on this week, and I think that's all I have.
The president's looking at me, there's my sign. I have been enjoying Safe Routes to Schools events. Walked to Billingshurst, they met at Westergard and walked to Billingshurst, and there was a group of kiddos that rode up on their bicycles, it was just the cutest thing, and then Glenn Duncan walked to school. Also attended the Career Construction Career Day. Bravo for bringing up trustee Westlake, that the trades are really looking to our schools to build a workforce, and I think it's a great way to go, and we should be doing it. The Rise Academy, the preschool brought back great memories of my time at the E.L. Core Childcare Center at Trekkie Meadows Community College. I've done a lot of school visits, and I visited schools that had a new principal to that school, not a new principal in our district, but to that school, Reed, Cannon, Mount Rose, Collin Ranch, Huffaker, Winnemucca, hers. I had the opportunity to speak with Dean's Future Scholars at UNR that are in the early childhood education studies through the Dean's Future Scholars. And there were students from Worcester Hug and Reed, and all have completed an experiential internship at various early childhood programs. I attended the National School Board Association PAC region meeting in Salt Lake City. Again, that's just a beautiful city. Reminds me of Reno, beautiful like Reno. Clark County reps were there, Churchill and White Pine fellow trustees. We had some wonderful conversations about what's working in their school districts. We all have some of the same concerns, attendance, budgets, and the future in general. The states that were represented were Idaho, Oregon, Utah, Washington, Alaska, and Nevada. Nevada presented the Nevada Association of School Boards, presented on our 83rd legislative session, was very well-received. I will say that because of our teamwork in the state of Nevada and our Nevada Association of School Superintendents, we were able to accomplish a lot. Our 17 school districts really coalesced, came together with a unified voice, hoping to have that happen again in the 84th session. It's, again, I'll just end with, it's just such an honor to serve and spend time in our schools with everyone that's in our schools and see the wonderful things that truly are happening on a daily basis.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I had an opportunity to attend some school visits as well, Drake Elementary, Libby Booth, Pine Middle School. I'm focusing on some of our schools that have new principals as well. Also was at the Auto Museum for the Special Needs Resource Fair last week. Very enlightening and inspiring event, just a ton of resources out there that I think a lot of our families and citizens throughout Washoe County don't really realize are available for their children, for their families. Certainly enjoyed the ribbon cutting at Rise as well, and had a chance to visit AACT with trustee Hall, in fact, with Senator Cortez Masto paid a visit, and we spent the afternoon with her, so, thank you.
All right, JJ, I'm going to let you get my first picture up before I start, because I'm going to need all of my three minutes. So lots to share. First is that Superintendent Ernst and I were very pleased to speak at the Sparks Rotary. In particular, I'm a big fan of their four-way test. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned if we didn't all follow those four-way test rules? So that was really great to enjoy that and speak to that community group. I attended an event that was put on by the Strengthen Our Community Group, who has done so much work in this district. The next picture that I have is from the Trekkie Meadows tomorrow. It was really, really, truly special. I was awarded with the Civic and Neighborhood Engagement Silver Star Award, and then also the Ed Alliance was also recognized in the Education and Lifelong Learning category. It's just a really, really special day with my family, some of the colleagues, and I just want to say thank you so much for that recognition. Visited a lot of schools, Bernice Matthews Elementary, Libby Booth, Huffaker, Loder, Mount Rose, Collin Ranch, Anderson, Damani Ranch, and Swope, and three of those schools have new principals, so it was exciting to see all their plans for those schools, really, really nice to spend some extra time with them. I also attended the Youth Mental Health Summit, which is always such an incredibly important time for this community to come together to talk about that. Participated in Construction Career Day, record-breaking attendance at that event. And then also, it's not just for the Washoe County School District, our rural district neighbors come and participate in that as well, too. We smashed every record we've ever had for participating students, and I know that that program is just going to continue to grow, so thank you so much to the CTE team for putting that on. This picture right here, I spoke to the Sierra chapter of the Realtors at the Builders Association about the school district, where we're going, what we've accomplished, what lies ahead, and that was a really, really incredible opportunity to really properly put out the information to the community and certainly to an important group like Realtors, who are helping us welcome new families to the community. And then the fourth picture, I attended the GSR groundbreaking for their new arena and home of the UNR Wolf Pack, see some familiar faces there, including former board president and now state senator, Dr. Angie Taylor. Just a really, really exciting time for all of us. And then it was truly an honor to get to speak at the Rise Ribbon Cutting. Their new facility is truly special, and I want to plus-one what trustee Westlake and trustee Nicolet said about them also being able to provide childcare, which has previously been a major barrier to adults seeking higher education. Education has no expiration, and it's always something that we can do for everyone, whether you are a four-year-old or a three-year-old in pre-K, all the way up to your adult years. And that finishes my board report. Thank you. All right, that closes item 4.02 and brings us now to item 4.03, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, trustees, appreciate it. There's a lot of exciting things, and appreciate you highlighting all the good work that's happening in the district. It's been nice, I've had a chance to visit Debbie Smith with President Alexander at TMCC, really continuing to look at deepening our work with dual credits. Also visited Incline High School with President Sandoval, and again, really leaning into that space, but what's really encouraging is we sit with the kids, and the kids give us some really honest and candid feedback, particularly around advanced placement classes and concurrent or dual enrollment classes, some of which we've heard before. So those are really great experiences. Over at AACT, the aviation program, the mural was painted by one of our former students, and to hear her story and hear what she did with the creation of this mural at AACT was rewarding. Just seeing things come full circle in education is always a really great aspect. I won't go into Rise, other than it's really nice how, as a school district, we're connecting pieces of need in our community. Early childhood, building teacher education, and providing adult education. So we're not just in the K-12 space, we're all the way down in the three-year-old space, and we're all the way up in the 22-year-old space, and so, and beyond. And so I think that's just a really neat something. It's been really nice, Deputy McMaster and I have been out to schools celebrating the progress that they have made with their star ratings and their proficiency gains. And one of the things we've really worked to do is celebrate it with the staff, the people that are really creating and doing great things for our kids, having a chance to celebrate with them. Over at Trainer, we got to celebrate with all of the students and all of the staff, and boy, was that fun. But really with some intentional effort to share that award with the people that are really doing great work. And then I'll close with saying thank you to our central office team. Fall break is great, and our schools get that chance, and maybe students can shut down a little. But I will say, our central administrative team is working through fall break, and so really working on things for the second quarter, the second semester, and even things for the next year. And so I'm grateful, and just wanted to highlight that so many people are still doing that work in preparation for our schools and really in preparation for the rest of the year. So that's what I have to share for the day, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, that closes item 4.03 and section four in its entirety, and brings us now to section five, our closing items, beginning with item 5.01, our closing public comment. JJ, who are we welcoming today?
Joanna Cogliano.
Welcome, Joanna Cogliano, is that correct?
Cogliano.
Cogliano, welcome.
Hi, I want to apologize in advance for not being super-prepared, but I'm here to urge you to reconsider dropping the funding for the Gate Institute at HUG, because I personally have a child who goes to the Gate Institute, and they benefit greatly, oh, thank you, from being able to be a part of that institute, not only because they've been gifted through the entire schooling, and they went through the SWAS, and they went through the magnet, and I know for a fact that the accelerated math isn't, like, kids aren't allowed to take the AP testing as freshmen unless they're part of the Gate Institute. And it's a struggle for me as a parent, because I know that she, as well as her peers, benefit from the institute, because they have that hands-on, more advanced learning, more advanced learning, and there are the gifted certified teachers. So my concern is that if they do take the Gate Institute from HUG and take all that funding, and yes, they might add some AP classes or IB classes to other schools, A, how much occupancy is HUG as a high school going to lose? And what programs are going to suffer, whether it's Orchestra or JROTC, or how many kids that happen to be in the Gate Institute are in those? And in that manner, like, what was the point of building this big elaborate new school when you may lose a third of your kids? Because they're going to say, well, I'm not going to have my mom cart me all the way across town to go to HUG when I could just go to where I'm zoned for. And then in the same token, they're not going to be challenged, because they're not open to as many AP classes or whatnot, and then you're going to have kids acting out, and it's like, I loved that she had the option to go to the Gate program, because she could pick her own pathway, and it's not supposed to affect the kids that are in their pathway now, but it's going to end up, because as they scale back, the teachers are going to be scaled back, and then it's like, are you going to load 40 kids instead of 20 kids on each AP teacher? Because that's not fair to them either. Are they going to get that same learning? Or is everybody just going to suffer? And I'm just concerned that, yes, it's no child left behind, and all kids should be taught equally, and everybody should have opportunities, but where are the opportunities for the kids that are gifted and need that extra attention, whether they're neurodivergent, they may be excelling in this aspect but not necessarily in other aspects? And also, it was kind of off-putting as a parent to not exactly know about this until it was ruled upon, because the wording was a little off, and it was just assumed that you guys were discussing budgeting and not cutting an entire program. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Never be sorry. You don't have to worry about coming up here with, like, perfect script. I thought that was amazing. We're the ones that are lucky for your public comments, so don't apologize for speaking from the heart. That's always a great place to speak from.
Eli?
Hi, Eli, welcome.
So I would like to come up with the same goal in mind, to...
So I would like to come up with the same goal in mind to ask for your reconsideration of cutting the Gate Institute. Specifically, I will be talking about the JROTC program as over 70% of the HUG JROTC Battalion leadership is made up of students from this Gate Institute. And if we did not have these students leading our battalion, it would simply just not function. These students are the main reason why our HUG JROTC program is as good as it is. They can not only take the accelerated classes that they are highly qualified for and need, but they can be a significant part and serve their role in one of the better JROTC programs in the district. Many students in this institute are depending on this program and cannot get the same accelerated courses as in anywhere else as they can at HUG. HUG offers more AP classes to upcoming freshmen than any other school in this district. And it is very helpful for accelerated students. Many of these freshmen come from Magnet Middle School and HUG aims to continue the courses that these middle schools gave to these accelerated students. And not many other places in this district offer as much as HUG does. I really hope you can take this into consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for those remarks, Eli. Did a wonderful job.
Sam Cogliano.
Welcome, Sam. So you are the Sam that, that your mom was mentioning.
Yes.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you. I would like to speak um still regarding the reconsideration of cutting the Gate Institute at HUG. I would like to speak on behalf of the orchestra program. I personally am a part of the HUG orchestra program. I am a cello in the Chamber Orchestra. We very recently had a concert and our in um conductor asked us to stand up if we were a part of the Gate Institute. And over half of our orchestra stood up because um HUG has two main feeder middle schools and only one of them has an orchestra program. So coming into orchestra, we're really relying on students who are coming for the Gate Institute to bulk it up. Because when we look, okay, we have a concert orchestra and a chamber orchestra. This is very disorganized. I'm so sorry. I was previously in the concert orchestra and it was a lot more disorganized because we had some students who had never touched an instrument and then some who had been in an orchestra all of middle school and were now coming in and continuing. Some who are learning new instruments after having played, say, violin all of high sch- or middle school. And I really think that um if we want to continue having a strong orchestra program and music department in general, we need to have that input from other schools, kids who are coming for the Gate Institute to get accelerated classes and to be a part of a strong orchestra. Um, thank you.
Thank you. I love your T-shirt, by the way. And you never need to apologize. No one ever needs to feel um perfect when they come and they speak before us. You did a great job, Sam.
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Um, no offense to Gate program because their, Gate program have HUG because the, those program were very successful by the way. And unfortunately, we don't have the, you know, have a funding for that to keep a program alive and a petition to send to those kids to HUG. So we wish we could try and move the program to Wooster, but we couldn't survive. So, so back to the board. So, so my name is Paul Navaduran. Um, I'm um Nap War III. So I want to talk about, um, I want to talk about how to invest in this community because I will, I'm thankful for, for this board member to think about considering what Libby Booth and Vashem Memorial Elementary School look like. When after Loder, we could, we could judge him because those two schools cannot wait because they're, the woman is declining and the woman will decline uh soon as. So I hopefully the new school will, will bring up the, will, will fulfillment, assignment for the school soon to come. So I'm hopefully the student from this area, from Char School will come to a new Lower Elementary School or especially for modernized or new uh booth at the Middle School because uh those area, you know, it's a, that, nah, I know Tammy Zaman and Adam Sealy are working so hard to bring those community uplifted because I know if you look at Woman Wooster is declining, you know. You know, I tell the, I tell the nap meeting other day, uh, October, you go watch on YouTube. I told them that we need to invest those communities, not to me and not to those Midtown community. We need to invest those communities entryway all the way to Mill Street. In, in Dan Crew Fourth Street Corridor. No, no, wait, not, not, not War III, okay. In Green Mill Street. So, so make sure, make sure to get the project going. Build new apartments, a new town hall, a new low income, income-based apartment, like those one on New World and Morning Lane. So I, so we can bring more students in and will increase the women of those, of those schools. So hopefully Wooster will, a woman will increase. We have an in-and-out permits going out there and a new GSR arena. So I know the Smith Street kids and my neighborhood, the New World neighborhood want to go to, to, to Poly. But I, I don't, I wanna say, sadly, we may have Vaughn Middle School. I tell, I tell it overcrowded. So, so thank you. I would say for the new Vaughn Middle School. So thank you.
Thank you. We're very excited, too.
Jeff Claxo.
Welcome. Is that Mr. Claxo? Welcome, Mr. Claxo.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Jeff. I am here to advocate for the Gate program. Uh, my son uh recently graduated UNR, wouldn't have without having gone through the Gate program. And when I was made aware of this, it reminded me of addressing this very body probably nine years ago with the same argument. And so there's a lot of irony in the discussion of having to remind people that the gate, the value of the Gate program. I know you guys have decisions that are just, you know, all over the board of different things. And uh, but hearing about this uh funding-based issue as we discuss a new parking garage at this site. And recognizing too that I was a Washoe County gifted student and went through and went through UNR and everything. And it is funny that you guys are in the same building that was there when I was doing it here. But anyway, the value of that Gate program with the uh, it helped with his evaluation of ADHD and the guidance through that. My understanding of how that could be replaced is very limited. And I look to you guys, uh, especially now that I'm, I'm in the senior league, you know, I'm, I'm no longer, I will not have another child to go through the Washoe. Maybe I'll have a grandkid. Um, my, my son, uh, well, he would need to increase his social skills to meet, which would probably help. But the uh, anyway, the serious of, of this is uh just so profound to me when I heard about it. I also was wondering, why is this not an agenda item, too? Why was this just launched on me that threw the grapevine? I hope that the, the deep, deep relationship that kids get out of that community collectively. And I was against it when my son was zoned for HUG High School, or not for HUG High School. He was zoned for Reno, but we ended up having to arrange for him to get to HUG High School every day for his uh education in, in high school. And it worked out. We uh, and I'm here as a success story and advocate of that program and would hate to see, mostly remind you, these kids, if you don't give them the proper guidance, they'll find guidance elsewhere. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jeff. We appreciate it.
The board received emails from Shavas, Sam Sherporin, Gary Furimoto, Jesse Martinuck, Andrea LeSean, Rick Altenberg, Laura Laxo, Cheryl Siegel, Christopher Kane, Suzanne Groneman, Jamie Bullard, Casey Smith, Spencer Gillis, Nicole Fiero, Jennifer Stoner, Heidi Shefick, Cami Hendricks, Danielle McIntosh, Marie Haas, Justin Laxo and Bill Clark.
Thank you, JJ. That closes item 5.01 and thank you so much to all of our speakers. We appreciate it. And brings us now to item 5.02, our next meeting announcement, which will be Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. And I will also um provide an additional heads up to our community that the November scheduling is an unusual scheduling for our board. Traditionally, we have our meetings the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. But due to how Veterans Day follows, uh falls, and then also Thanksgiving, we will be having one meeting on November 18th. So it'll be the third Tuesday of the month. So just noticing everyone for that. That meeting, of course, will be properly noticed, but it does fall outside of our traditional schedule. So just wanted to provide the community plenty of notice on that. And that closes item 5.02 and brings us to item 5.03, adjournment at 4:27 PM. Thank you.